All right, why don't we go ahead and get started and welcome everybody. Do we have a flag in here? No, we'll makeshift one though.
Well, somebody has a helmet.
Yeah, maybe. Well, let's do the roll call first. And we're our, or never mind, I'm sorry, I'm totally out of sorts being in the wrong room. Let's do the pledge of allegiance first. How about that?
We know there's a flag off front.
There's a flag somewhere that way.
There's a flag upstairs. That way.
Let's do it to each other.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Now if I can have the roll call, please.
And counsel, just a reminder for you to put on your mics, otherwise it's not recorded at all, there's nothing, so thank you. Ms. Berry?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Kalen?
Here.
Mr. Pepe?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Charter?
Here.
Here.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. And if I can have a motion to adopt a meeting agenda, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a meeting agenda.
Thank you. If I can have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kalen on the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, the meeting agenda is adopted. And I believe that we have one person to be sworn in.
Mm-hmm.
Kathy?
Mr. Way. But we also have a lot of other people here, I'm not sure what.
There may be others who need to be sworn in.
Oh, we have others. Okay. Yeah. Oh, I love that. Well, let's do one at a time. Okay. And Mr. Way, you want to come up? Raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I, James Way, do solemnly swear.
I, James Way, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the Architectural Advisory Board.
As a member of the Architectural Advisory Board.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Fantastic, just sign here, please, and I'll send you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I have Vicki Barnes and Cinder Rose, who's who?
I'm Vicki.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, then it's Vicki, if you'll come forward, please. This is for you. Repeat after me, raise your right hand. I, Vicki A. Barnes, do solemnly swear.
I, Vicki A. Barnes, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the Human Services Advisory Council.
As a member of the Human Services Advisory Council.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Great, if you'll just sign here, please. All right. Mom, just take a picture. Of course. Let's get a picture. Who's taking a picture?
I'm sorry?
Who's taking a?
No, I asked if my mom took a picture. Did you get it?
Oh, okay. Well, let's do it.
Well, we can do it again.
Come on. Come on up here. Come on. Make sure that was my mom in the background. Come on. Just make sure I can.
Over 10.
Need to agree to a second term all that.
That's fine. You swear. I swear. You swear.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vicki.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Camp.
Awesome.
And we are on to.
We got one more.
Oh, we got one more.
We have one more.
Oh, okay.
Come on, Mr. Camp. You're next, this is your card.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand, please. I, Donald Camp, do solemnly swear.
I, Donald Camp, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the Library Board of Trustees.
As a member of the Library Board of Trustees.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Great, now if you'll sign here. Anybody else? Okay, thank you all.
All right, thank you. All right, we are on to receipt of public comments, requests and consent items. Excuse me, I don't have any speaker slips, so are there any members of the public that wish to address the council? Okay, Kathy, did we receive any written comments this past two weeks?
You received one or two comments, but they were with regard to the development project that's going to be heard at the next council meeting, so I put them in that folder.
Great, thank you.
To bring forward then.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing section, and do we have any council requests? Ms. Berry?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask that at some point we take advantage of a closed session to discuss the staff evaluations and compensation.
And I believe that Kathy is putting that on the calendar. Kathy, we determined a date for the closed session for that?
The 15th, because you want to do it tonight?
No, staff is not going to be there.
Yeah, no. I think the plan is to have that on the 15th.
It's an executive session, should I be more precise?
Closed session for personnel.
Yeah, it's still executive session, so it's the same. So if we can have the closed session forms prepared for the 15th, and counsel, that's when we'll be taking up the staff evaluations and then compensations as well, to go over that together.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Other council member requests? Okay, we are on to report of the city manager of the council, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mayor Baruch, and members of council. I might be able to just join with the city attorney in providing a report on the hearing that just occurred and was completed about five minutes ago. We've had a full day of activity with the Commission on Local Government, and the five members of that commission were here in town, beginning at 10 o'clock, when we met with them, and we got on a bus and took a tour of the boundary adjustment area, so they could see it in person, both the property yard and the school site. And then we came back to City Hall, and at 2:00 PM had about an hour and a half session with them, where they heard presentations from the city attorney and from Cynthia Tianti, the deputy county attorney from Fairfax County. And we presented the history of the issues that led us to the resolution of litigation in the form of a sale, an agreement for the sale of the water system, and presented all the facts associated with that, and then entertained their questions. And I think it was a very thorough examination of all the issues. We were able to convey to them that this was an agreement that was supported by the city council, supported by the Board of Supervisors of Fairfax County, and supported by the Fairfax Water Board, and that we urged their favorable recommendation for the boundary adjustment. And then tonight, at 7:00, the commission held a public hearing, and there were two, there were three speakers. Susan Carney, the chairman of the school board, spoke in favor of the agreement, in favor of the boundary adjustment, and a citizen of the Poplar Heights Homeroes Association, who the council has heard from in the past, he came and spoke in favor of the agreement. And then lastly, Vice Mayor Snyder came and welcomed the commission to the City of Falls Church and urged their favorable recommendation on the boundary adjustment as well. So I wanted to just give that brief report, and John, if there are other key things that you would want to add to that for the council's information?
I think that the city manager covered it pretty fully. Some of the things we did stress to the commission in our presentation this afternoon is that really this boundary adjustment and more generally the water sales agreement is in the best interest not only of the City of Falls Church and the Fairfax County, but also the Commonwealth of Virginia. And they, the commission, you know, based on their comments during that 2:00 presentation, seems like they are fully supportive, although, you know, their final report and recommendation will not be issued until September, but based on the statements today, I think that things went very well.
Any questions for John or Wyatt?
Either or, either person. What, in your, in the full day, were there any issues that the commissioner was raised of some concern? Were there anything that they were focusing in on in particular that needed to be addressed? Was this just simply a straightforward?
The short answer is no. I mean, there were no questions that came up that were surprised or that presented any sort of concern on the commission's part about the proposed boundary adjustment. They were really fact-based, you know, things like, you know, who's currently providing sewer service to the school site? Answer, the city is, well, who will provide it after the boundary adjustment? Answer, the city. I mean, it was really focused on the nuts and bolts of ensuring that services provided to these properties will continue to be same level, that there won't be any increase in cost to either of the parties to the boundary adjustment agreement as a result of the adjustment.
Other council members?
Question, remind me again, is this dependent on them approving this, or what's the purpose of their visit?
That's, thank you for the question. The commission only makes a recommendation. They do not make a binding, finding, one way or the other. Having said that, their recommendation is a key part of the considerations by a three-judge panel that will be appointed after the commission has issued its recommendation. And historically, the three, quite frankly, the three-judge panel will defer to the recommendations of the commission on local government.
So the three-judge panel will make a determination approximately when?
The estimate we have is probably sometime in December of this year or January of 2014.
But that's after the vote?
That would be after the vote, that's correct.
So just to take this sort of a little bit farther down the path, if everyone voted in favor of it, yet this commission said, the judges said, "Well, we don't think this is in the best interest," or whatever standard they use, what would happen then, just out of curiosity?
Well, the boundary adjustment would not go forward. I have to say, the hypothetical you've just laid out, Mr. Charter, is, I think, exceedingly unlikely. I think that if the voters of the city vote to approve the sale of the water system and related to that, the boundary adjustment, that the three-judge panel will go ahead and approve it.
Go ahead, that's fine. Thank you.
And perhaps my, I'm mistaken, but at the closing comments of the commissioner, the cat commissioner, I thought I heard him say that he thought it was a good arrangement, or something to that effect, and that it would be something that was a solution that was good for both parties, something to that effect. That was what I believe I heard.
That was Chairman Kynes, and he did say that at the conclusion of the public meeting just a little while ago. He also, during the 2:00 session that Mr. Shields mentioned earlier, he and other members of the commission referred to this proposed boundary adjustment in terms like, it's a no-brainer, we are glad to see that, you know, both parties are supportive of it, and really, it makes sense, as he said, it makes sense for this to, you know, to be approved.
But also, in terms of the timing, we've pushed to have this hearing process early so that we will have the recommendation from the council on local government before the referendum. So that should be in September, so that will be in hand before the voters vote. I think that from their perspective, this is probably the smoothest process they're used to seeing. They do this around the state, and they are usually much more complicated and much more contentious. And so I think the sense from everybody in the room and from the commissioners was favorable.
Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That all sounds like good news. You mentioned that school board chair Carney testified. Her testimony, I know the press was in the room, so it'll be public, but is there a way to get what she said into our council records so that people who are used to looking on Falls Church's websites will see, because her testimony is important, I think, in this particularly?
We videotaped the 7:00 meeting at which Chairman Carney testified, and so it'll be available on, as I understand it, on CCTV, thank you. We'll also have a transcript available once that's completed. That should be done in the next couple of weeks.
And the school board is, Chairman Carney did speak on behalf of the school board, and the school board, I think, voted to authorize expression of their support. And there's a letter to that effect, which they provided directly to the commission, and we'll be able to scan that and make that available as well.
John, on the same topic, I think we still have an outstanding request about the level of engagement the council can have when it comes to the referendum, and whether we can take an advocacy piece as a council or as individual council members in our individual capacities, so I think that's still outstanding.
It is, we're working it, and we'll get an answer shortly. I understand the importance to the city council and to the citizens as to, you know, having, you all having guidance on that.
And I think we need that sooner than later. I think some of us may feel a little hamstrung that we didn't take public positions today at the hearing or elsewhere. So for the press's purpose, that's part of the reason why you're not hearing a lot of council comments on this issue right now, until we get some further guidance about the appropriate level of engagement the council can have leading up to the referendum. So that's where that stands right now.
Vice Mayor Snyder? I did ask for questions, and the one question I got was what was being done to educate the community, and I said that we've talked individually to folks in the community, that the news press in particular has been covering the issue for many years, that there was a nonpartisan event coming up in September, and I was sure we would do whatever else was appropriate, so. And I think he was speaking perhaps from a history of a case where the public wasn't adequately informed, and the assumption was that they'd go a certain way and they went the other way. So he was stressing the importance of public information.
All right, anything else?
Following on those wise words by you two, the Q and A that Susan has been working on, which is going to come our way sometime pretty soon, I suppose, excuse me, is the next additional thing, I guess, that we talked about earlier. So is that still likely to be in July, or?
And, you know, what's on the website right now is the PowerPoint presentation that I provided back in November, when the agreement was first discussed, and other supporting documentation. So that's been up and available publicly for a half a year now. And what we're now gearing up for is much more of a sort of a push of information out in the form of an FAQ, in the form more of a campaign, just to make sure we're complying with the city attorney's direction in terms of advocacy, but the goal is to get information out, neutral information about the referendum question.
All right, anything else? Okay, we are on to business on the agenda, and I don't believe we had anything where, because we are going to be going into closed session, so I believe the next item that we have is council member comments. Ms. Berry?
I just wanted to say that I participated in, and as well, other council members participated in, I think, the very important visioning session with the school division and the community. I thought it was extraordinarily useful, it was nicely attended, probably 140 people in the room at least when I was there. I thought the atmosphere was collegial, cordial, and I think people were looking for solutions. I was particularly impressed by the way that the meeting was choreographed, was run, and the decision to place sort of disparate people at the same table. I was very grateful for the mix of folks who were at my table, including the, our middle school principal and a number of moms from the community, and it was, it was an excellent mix, excellent dialogue, and I am very much looking forward to where we go from here.
Mr. Duncan?
Seconding that motion also, I just wanted to say that I found it particularly encouraging that over the course of the day, during the visioning session, I thought there was a awareness that built and was established of the connection between the water deal and the schools' facilities issues. I think a lot of people came into it naturally without a understanding of what we're talking about, but came away with a much clearer understanding that the property switch annexation and the schools' facilities needs are something that the community is, you know, going to be discussing and will more fully understand, but they really began to understand, I think, the connection between the two.
Mr. Duncan, other council members? Vice Mayor Snyder?
I guess one other point, in addition to those already made, was I was impressed at the commitment of the school community to reach out and work with other segments of the community that don't have connections with the schools. I thought that was a very, very positive outcome as well from the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
At the, for those who attended, was there any discussion of financial issues with the city? And one last thing, Dave, what is this outreach to those who do not have an immediate connection with the schools? Whoever was the?
I can certainly.
Ms. Berry?
Certainly at my table, certainly at my table, there was a great deal of discussion about the budget, about how we were actually going to pay for this vision, and what it meant in dollars and cents, and what the pressures were on the schools, and equally what the pressures were on the rest of the citizenry. And I think it was an, it was an eye-opening for some folks. I think it was, it was front and center in the dialogue. And maybe Mr. Snyder and Mr. Duncan can help me on this, but I think the outreach included the business community, it included neighborhoods, it included folks who don't have kids in the school system. Were there other obvious communities? But I thought it was, it wasn't just sort of the usual cast of characters.
Vice Mayor Snyder, and then?
I would say that's right. I would add one other thing. The next steps, as far as I know, not been determined, but I know one of the consistent sort of recommendations from the attendees was that the schools recognize that the entire, we need the entire community, and they recognize the importance of working with the other parts of the community, and they were talking potentially about, like, various committees and how to perhaps structure that relationship and make sure that it occurs. And yes, I would support the other comments, there was great interest in, on financial issues, so yeah.
Mr. Camp?
I was just curious, and I'll get some more offline, but what specifically, you know, were the issues that were raised? What was specifically eye-opening? And what specific, I mean, outreach is great, we all love it, but how is this going to take place, and what is it expected to accomplish? And why would this outreach accomplish something different than currently exist? Was it, did it get that far, or is this still sort of aspirational in nature?
Let me ask this, do we know, do we know if there's going to be a report that's issued by the school board on this? Sort of summarizing what occurred, perhaps that would be helpful.
My understanding is that there will be a report from the session.
So what, it might be appropriate to kind of take a look at that and see if we have any questions, and then go back to the school board, so it was really their visioning session, not ours? Does that make sense?
That sounds like a good idea. Those of us who were on the steering committee, I think, received a first blush PDF of the comments of the people who attended that day, just kind of a data dump, which was, you know, of interest if you wanted to plow through a lot, but I think they're going to distill that. And, yeah, Mr. Kalen's questions are important, and I'm happy to talk with him a little further about it. I was encouraged at my particular table, which, as Ms. Berry says, included mostly people who I did not know, not that I have to know everybody, but, you know, I mean, I was struck by the fact there were not the usual suspects, and I thought we came away with, A, an understanding, as I said, that, you know, working on the referendum is an important short-term goal, B, because of the possibilities of commercial development that could help generate revenues on some of that land, and C, more broadly, an awareness of, you know, the role of economic revitalization in helping us grow our revenues as a part of the way to address the bonding costs for not only school facilities, but also municipal facilities. I felt like the group of people I was with came into the day without any, you know, real knowledge or understanding of most of that, and came, at the end of the day, away with, you know, an awareness very sophisticated on all three of those things, and so I was encouraged.
All right. We are on, if there's nothing else, we are on to approval of minutes, and then we'll be going into closed session, and I believe that we may take a motion after we come back from closed session, so. Any comments on the 4/22/13 minutes?
Just, sorry.
That's all right.
Just one, Ms. Bishow under line 815, where we're talking about the fair housing training, just wanted to make it clear that Mr. Duncan said he, giving you time to flip back to where we are, okay, said he had attended the training session in 2012. His language that I would add in there, otherwise it makes it sound like I specifically am trying to play hooky. Yeah, exactly, he had attended the training session in 2012 and was not planning on attending this new one, but the city attorney encouraged, I think, all to attend because there might be additional information in cases that would be helpful, not only to him, but just would be helpful, period. Thanks.
All right, other council members?
Mr. Mayor?
On, okay, you weren't here. Dave?
Very quickly, on line 330, Madam Clerk, the, begin with eliminate and end with quote reserves. I don't think I said that, so I suggest deleting that unless that's verbatim. I don't think it is. Thanks.
Delete that, okay.
Anything else? All right, if I can get a motion on the 4/22/13 minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the 4/22/13 city council meetings as amended.
Thank you. If I can get a second?
Second.
That's Mr. Duncan on the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes, any abstentions? The ayes have it, the 4/22 meeting minutes are adopted. We're on to the 6/24/13 minutes. Any edits?
Just one, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Line 93, top of the page there. I think I may, I'm not sure if I said this, it's double language, though. If you could, could just take out the phrase that said, "which included the value of the boundary adjustment."
Okay.
Because that's also said in the next sentence.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Other edits? And I had provided Kathy some edits, I asked her to plug in a little bit of the, and this is online, about 123 to 135, sort of laying out the exchange that I had with the city attorney about the federal government's involvement, that there being none, and then two, that I, as a, and I'll just clarify, it wasn't in the verbatim, but what I meant to say is a potential matter, I would not be getting involved, not that I shouldn't or must not, but as a potential matter, I wouldn't be, and just asking staff to inform me if the federal government ended up having any issues come forward or federal courts, similar to what happened with me recusing myself from the mediation piece. All right, any other edits? Vice Mayor Snyder?
Line 112, I think it should read, was not appealable as of right in Virginia.
As of right?
As of right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? If I can get a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the minutes of the 6/24/2013 city council meeting as amended.
Thank you. If I can get a second?
Second.
That's Mr. Duncan on the second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. One abstention, that's Mr. Pepe. I take it you weren't here. The ayes have it with one abstention. You never know. He disagrees with the edits.
Taking a moral stance.
All right, that takes us through the business agenda. We are going to go into closed session, and then again, we are likely to come back with a motion, so we'll be conducting other business matters when we come back in. Upon a motion made by council member.
Snyder.
And seconded by council member.
Berry.
And passed by a voice vote of city council, council one, into closed session pursuant And passed by a voice vote of city council, council went into closed session pursuant to 2.2-3711, A29 of the Code of Virginia for discussion or award of public contracts involving the expenditures of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offerers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract, where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, to which the jurisdictional contracts, Mayor Baruch, yes, Vice Mayor Snyder? Councilmember Berry?
Yep.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalen? Councilmember Pepe?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.